We need somebody to take minutes.
I can do it.
Because Tim is not here.
Roger, you can film and take minutes at the same time, can't you?
Uh, I forgot my pen.
A good thought, Paul, good thought.
It's on a share, you know?
Okay, I will call the selectments meeting to order also.
That's right, there's two of you.
Alright.
Okay, be advised, this is an open session, public meeting, subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded.
Very good.
Nice job. Um, we can put off the minutes for now and we'll start, so I, I provided, I will send a copy of this to Mary if we make it, so this, this piece of paper, a list from Tim Wheeler of all of town offices, and these are divided into four groups. Those that are voted for, who the TA has obviously no appointment authority over, and then the three different groups of people, the positions that would be screened by the TA and assisted by a search committee, and then provided to the select board for recommendations. That's the police chief, fire chief, department chairs.
Meaning approval.
Well, like, like board, the, like, board would pick them, yes.
Yes, the board for final approval.
For final approval.
Okay.
Yes, yes, board for selection and approval. Um, as laid out in section, uh, 32B of the draft special act. Positions jointly appointed by the responsible committee, um, working with the town administrator, since, you know, the librarian is appointed by the library trustees, the special act gives the library trustees the ability to work with the town administrator, and the town administrator to work with the library trustees, to get a pool together and, and help select a candidate. Um, that's the list of people who are jointly appointed. And the list on the back, um, are the positions that would be appointed by the TA with review by the board of selectmen, as laid out in, uh, 32C. These are the field drivers, the fence viewers, the cultural council, many of the, most of the volunteer board, board types of people. So, you all had questions?
Yes. This might answer one of mine. Start on the first page, I guess. There were a couple of typos.
Oh, there, 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 there are typos, there are capitalizations that aren't, that aren't consistent.
I wasn't sure.
You were there.
It's my forte is finding examples.
That's great.
We're getting started on the right foot here, aren't we?
That's right. Well, hey, my comments are in red, so I like them.
When it's called on, it will come back to you, Chris, for final editorial review.
So, yes, if you want to tell us what those are.
Or you can just, if you have, like, those sorts of editing.
Well, there weren't that many that I found.
I mean, and, and, I mean, everyone else will see it too, so.
Yeah, you can either give.
There's no telling what the lawyers will.
If you can give us the, the.
I can do it quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the first typo, I guess it would be, would be in the paragraph section two, the board.
We made it all into section two.
Yep. It's the last, I would assume it's the last two sentences. It starts, "The board shall act through the adoption of policy directives and guidelines which shall be implemented by the administrator and the officers and employees appointed by or under the authority of the board." And I'm assuming you mean with period.
Well, with a period, and maybe we need a capital letter.
And a capital I, yeah.
Hey.
That was the first one that's good. Do you want me to do the typos first, or do you want me to just go out of questions as I go?
Do, we can mix it up.
Alright.
Mix it.
So, the next section that I had a question on was C, "The board shall."
Yep.
And I guess, I'm not sure whether I wasn't reading it correctly, um, because I'm looking at the list that Beth gave us, and it does say that the board, in the, in the paper you just gave us, says that the board will do a final approval of the building inspector and the fire chief, however, the, they are in the list that I'm reading that says, "Except those appointed by the moderator, elected by voters, building inspector, fire chief." The building inspector and the fire chief was the one I had a question on. And just making clarification that those are the ones that the board will approve. Am I correct? Or am I reading it wrong?
I read it the same way you did the first time, and I think, and this is a section that I think got added while I was away, I read this after a long time, which maybe needs a few things to be rewritten, and joint appointments, except those appointed by the moderator or the building inspector or the fire chief or the library trustees, or elected by the voters. So, we're talking about, we're actually talking about the fact that the select board does not have the ability to appoint the librarian, because that belongs to library trustees.
Right.
So, I think that's what this is supposed to say, but the.
The building inspector and.
And the.
The point, the wiring inspector.
Exactly.
And so, and so, of course.
I think, is that.
Fire chief of the points.
Okay.
Now, I understand.
So, it's just sticking the voters in the middle of it, made it, took a, took a turn, so that's gotta be, yeah.
Well, either that or maybe you take that comma after appointments out, would that help clear it up a bit? Joint appointments, except those. I don't know. That's why I wondered if I was reading, not reading it right.
Probably elected by the voters, or appointed by the moderator, building inspector.
Right, yeah.
Probably elected by the voters needs to come first, probably. Because basically, you're not appointing those, you're, right?
I mean, it is a fairly run-on sentence. I mean, is there any way that you could break it up, which might help with the understanding? Because it just kept, like, going on and on and on. Yeah. Well, no, then that's what I put, it needs to be broken out far too lengthy, and much simpler explanation should be provided.
What you could do is get rid of the word "including" in the first sentence, have the commissions, and say, "Joint appointments, except those appointed by the moderator."
The joint appointments, periods.
Well, I mean, I, I think I just, I want to make sure that it's clear, so that there's, if there's ever anybody challenging.
Note clarity is critical.
You know?
So, we'll just make a note to, to, I think, I think we know, you all, you don't have any issue with the intent.
Exactly.
It's just the fact.
It's just the way this.
Yeah.
Well, I thought I had an issue with the intent, so I, I, you know, was trying to reread it, thinking maybe I made a mistake.
I think, I think the point was to make it so you were categorizing it of having to be positions elected by the voters, uh, appointed by these other individuals, or under those jurisdictions, or, or joint, the joint ones.
Right.
So, it just needs to be categorized differently, just structured.
Yeah.
Can you, go ahead, do you have any other questions right there, because I had a question? Or do you have any other comments?
No, not in that section.
Because, you know, because Chris and I had a conversation, um, just to try to see if there was any specific issues beforehand that we could just answer, but in that, in this section, is that part about appointing, um, any vacant positions that aren't filled by other appointing authorities, you know, that if they aren't filled within ninety days? So, we, you know, the comment that I made to Chris was, we don't know if there's any problem with doing that. That was sort of our own, something that we came up with as a committee, the ninety, you know, it wasn't something that we saw necessarily another, I don't think we saw that another.
No, but isn't that general law, actually, I believe?
That's, that allows.
That provides that authority?
Well, specifically with finance committee, uh, I believe after so many days, if a, if a position is not appointed by the moderator within so much time, the finance committee can forward to do that?
To self-appoint.
But I'm not sure. But then this would take it to the next level, that if, if moderator isn't appointed, and they aren't appointed, then it would fall to somebody, it would fall to you guys to appoint. So, that may be a legal question that we should probably address, because it's probably something that we sort of thought is more novel than we've seen elsewhere, but we've had these conversations about there are positions that are, that nobody else has the authority to appoint, and those that are the acting authority to appoint aren't appointing, so you have these holes, um, and if, you know, so. I think it's more of an encouragement for those that have the authority to actually do what they're supposed to do, so it doesn't get to this point. So, I think that's the intent of putting it in here, isn't to, like, steal somebody's power, but to just encourage them to use the power they have, use it or lose it kind of thing. So, that's, that's, that was the thought.
Correct.
Did you see that in any of the other?
But we've talked about that in another meeting.
We have talked about it.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't. It's not new.
Here, brand new, no, no, no.
No, we have, but we have talked about it, so it's just that we formalized, put it in last, last week, so.
And it, was this in any of the other?
It's not in necessarily, it's not in any other ones.
So, I would assume you sent it to.
We sent it to town council, but that's one of the.
Let you know if that's.
That's one of the things we're keeping our eye on, to just, we'll work on improving that. Section C, so it's grammatically more.
And maybe there, maybe, maybe that actually just needs to be some subpoints, like you.
Could be, it could be, yeah, maybe, you know, C, C1 or 2, or something like that, so, yep. Okay.
Um, I think the next thing I had was, uh, down under, it's the big B down there.
The big B?
No, the, the big B at the bottom of the first page.
Oh, well, it's indented, identification now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still under. I was trying to, because you're.
Eyes bumped in there, that's the problem, I think.
Well.
No, that's a 1.
That's a 1.
Right.
Okay, that's weird numbering.
Well, there's two I's, actually.
Yeah, I think this is supposed to be a subsection of, so that's like a, should be like a 1 or something.
Okay, I did that.
It's a, it's a subsection of H?
Yeah, because it's, the H has 1, 2, 3, 4, and then it goes next to I, so it's, it should just be, so, okay, so.
So, if that's a 1.
That's a 1.
Then, under B.
Yeah.
H says, "appoint and may reappoint an administrator who shall," identification and screening. This is just your grammar, but.
But 1, the last phrase in 1.
Provided that.
A, B.
Okay.
So, these are all, so these are all.
Yes, it does.
So, these are all the qualification, sort of, all are.
Yes. So, I didn't, I think I understood it. It was just a, I guess it was the outline.
The unfortunate outline in there.
That's okay.
Roman numerals versus letters, it looked the same.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I wasn't clear if the I at the bottom of the page was truly an I, or.
Right.
But it should be, I guess, because the other I is a 1.
Correct. Yeah, so it's, so that, so what's, so it should be H1, and then 1AB, and then 234.
And then I, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're on the same page. Kinda, now we're going page.
Now we're on the same page.
Oh, we are. So, my next question was on the next page, under L.
L. Oh, God, you jumped down.
Oh, because you're, you've got bigger font, maybe.
That's kind of personal, isn't it? Saying.
So, you're just, so you're, so you're.
Good one.
So, you're.
Now, we, this is why we need a personnel committee.
So, so you're in L before section 3?
What's it start with?
Suspend or remove.
It was, um, I don't know what it's, it's still under, it's the very end of the section 2.
Okay.
So, suspend or remove.
Suspend or remove.
Suspend or remove the administrator?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, like, I guess.
It's right before section 3, I think.
Oh, I had, I had more comments up above, but go ahead, we'll let you go first.
Yeah, that's fine, you can go back.
Okay. Yep.
So, I guess my question is, is it customary, um, to remove a town administrator for just cause? Or should it be just without the word "just"? It should be "cause," because there is a difference. And I think the, probably town council will fill you in on which one would be in our.
Yeah, I would think council would, yeah, would address that.
Because this is Massachusetts, an employee of will state, so.
I don't know, I'm just pulling off what I learned from school committee.
Right.
Where, you know, you don't want to put "just cause" in there unless you have to. Because it's hard to quote "just cause."
Oh, and "cause," right, which is, you know.
But, I mean, it may be required.
And so, it, and that, that's, that's an interesting, it's an interesting problem in that town administrator, prospective town administrators may be looking for that to avoid being pushed out.
Yes.
You know, without.
Exactly, you may not get a town administrator unless it says "just cause."
So, we'll have to.
And I think town council will let you know.
May have some opinions about that.
Yeah, one thing we should be doing is, I mean, if we're not already, I mean, I am, just making sure we're each kind of keeping track of what we think our lawyer counsel questions.
Should make sure when it comes back.
So that we have a list to, you know, we can maybe even forward those.
We haven't heard anything back from anybody, have we, though? Okay, just, I just.
So, if we have questions, maybe we can add that, send that out, Bill, to, to your contact, like, we'll make a list after this of, you know, things, things that have come up to just say, can you give us your opinion on these particular.
I'm looking at the, uh, special act for the town of Farah Haven, it says "just cause."
I'm sure, certainly we saw the language, we've seen the language.
It may be required.
Yeah, a bunch of questions.
Yeah, good to know the difference, that's good, it's a good question.
I think that was it on that page, so.
Can, can I make a suggestion, just, I know you were saying go back, but before we get too far into the others, Peg, do you want to go back and deal with anything you have about section 2?
Yeah, and.
And this may not be, um, may, may not, in order for me to understand it, in order for me to, you know, support it and talk to folks in town, on B, where it talks about identification and screening of appropriate candidates as coordinated by blah, 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 um, and maybe at a later date, is this going to be spelled out on how specific residents are going to be chosen, and again, it may not be some.
What, what, where, where, I'm sorry.
She's, she's talking about the screening process of B.
Yeah.
So, one of the.
So, we're still under the board, yeah.
Yeah, so, one of the things we talked about, um, and Chris and I actually had this conversation a little bit too, and I never did go back and look at how we were reauthorized necessarily at town meeting, but one of the things that we promised is a deliverable, when we delivered this, was not only this, but a job description and a hiring.
Process.
Process. So, that's not drafted by the time, by the time we get to special town meeting or before then, you know, we wanted to get this done because of the tight timeframe of publication and all that other stuff. Those two elements don't have to, and those are just recommendations, that no, it's not going to be in stone. That's what, this just says that there has to be a process, either done by the personal committee or a hiring committee that's comprised, and so, it could be either one, it just gives the town the flexibility of doing it that way, but I think we've certainly talked about making a recommendation of sort of like what the superintendent's process was through, like, there was a whole group and that screened candidates and, you know, so I don't know what that is, we haven't really defined it. But one of the things we want to do, which we haven't done yet, is to reach, we've done some outreach, outreach, but not, is to talk to other towns to find out what their hiring process was, and what types of committees they used to identify or, you know, screen candidates and things like that. So, so, so it's not going to be here, but yeah, you'll be seeing something to answer that, because that's a key part. We've seen some towns that just don't seem to have any hiring process, and it kind of scares us, because we've seen the quality of candidates that they get, and we're like, eh, yeah, we don't want.
We've put a lot of effort into this, we don't want to mess it up by getting, by getting.
Anybody.
Well, we're getting, and by having people, even if we get the right person, if the process isn't right to get there, they're undermined before they start.
Agreed.
So, so that's, so that's our intent.
And then again, from my own, um, information, number 2, little, or little I's, may not be a resident, sorry, below, it may not be a resident of the town.
Yeah.
So, am I reading that correctly, that you don't have to live in the town or in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts when you're appointed to take on this role?
Correct.
Correct.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it's really important.
As a matter of fact, I've looked at job postings on the Mass Municipal Association, and I've seen ones from New Hampshire, Connecticut, Rhode Island, looking for a town administrator.
So, they could live in Massachusetts.
And work in.
And work in New Hampshire, that's a. Yeah, is that, like, that's not a Mass General law, or?
No, that's, that's a preference. I mean, if we, if we wanted to say they have to live in the state, but the thing is, you could, then it would run into situations where you may not be able to appoint somebody if they, I mean, you might find somebody from New Hampshire that's going to move to the state, but we definitely didn't, we definitely were, do you think it's not necessary to have a person live in town? It could be to the benefit to not have that person feel the conflict of, I live in town, therefore, that I have to make decisions based on, is I going to put a fire in my house, or, you know, those kinds of things, or whatever, so. That's going to fire me, or, you know, whatever, so, I mean, you know, we haven't seen it, that's better.
They actually have, um, school districts who require their superintendent to live in town.
Yeah, I think that was an old thing, that used to be more common.
Probably not so much anymore.
No, but I remember when I was a selectman, there was, like, residence requirements twenty-five years ago, or things like that, so.
There have been residency requirements for teachers, even more recently, but at least a lot of the town administration we talked to, some of them commute insane distances. I'm pretty sure those who've been doing it a while, they're, they want to keep their kids in the school they're in, you know, all those things, which makes sense.
I, I guess, I guess I would say this about that one thing, is that it says, you don't have to be a town, a resident of the town or, the town of appointment, or during the period of service, but you're the selection board, so if you decide the person's out of state, doesn't want to move to the state, then you don't have to hire that person. It's just saying that it gives you the ability to, it's not, it's telling you there's not a residency requirement, so it gives you more flexibility.
Required.
I mean, you could, you could find somebody that lives in Nashua, or over the border on Rhode Island, and you think that's the best candidate by a mile, or God forbid, what if somebody, you had a candidate, and there was a residency requirement, and their family lived, and they had to move to go take care of that person, and like, now you've got a problem, so, that's, yeah. So, maybe more than you want, Peg, but.
No, no, I mean, when I, when I read it, it just, I mean, I could understand not living in town, I get that, but, you know, not living in Massachusetts, it just caught me off guard when I read that sentence, and I was like, well, wait a minute, you're going to help govern our town, but you're going to live way over here, so it just didn't make sense.
Yeah.
That's all.
Does that make, but does that explanation help?
It does.
You can take it, okay.
It does. Um, and then scooting down, and then you can pick back up on your section. So, in, uh, okay, L, under suspend and, suspend or remove the administrator by majority vote of the membership, and again, who's the membership?
Membership of the board, um, so. This is referencing.
Right, this is all referencing the powers of the board.
So, it's saying it's board, or it's a, um.
Okay.
Right.
Um, we clarify it, maybe, to just say.
I mean, you don't, you don't need to, I think it was just for me, as I was reading this, these were some of the questions that were coming up, and I'm thinking, if I have these questions, and somebody else is reading these, someone's going to have them too?
Yeah.
You know, looking at it for the first time.
Yeah, I kept, just as a, um, point of discussion about removal.
Okay.
We've, we talked with Division of Local Services, and we've had some conversations about maybe just a majority, but they did talk about if you've got a, um, which you don't have a five-person board, you know, you might want to have it be a supermajority, like, that kind of a stuff, so if we ever got to a five-person board, that might be something, because, you know, it becomes that political thing, so you really want it to be a bigger decision of, like, you know, really, everybody wants that, in your case, it's two or three, so it's majority.
Well, and the thing too, what I was trying to do is, if, you know, fast forward to the town meeting, when you're all up there explaining what this is, I'd be like, "Got a question, got a question." So, instead of, you know, strolling up to the front, if you could almost have, like, the notes in your pocket to be like, "Oh, somebody said a question, got an answer."
Yeah.
Okay.
Our goal too, is to be able to do a public forum about this, and go over all this detail, because.
Yeah, so, so what's happening, is a town meeting.
Hopefully.
People will have had a chance for their questions to be answered.
All right.
Yeah, that will be the one and only time they'll get to go through in detail and ask those questions.
Of the other things to take at town.
So.
Okay. All right, I'm done. I'll, I'll wait for you.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Section.
All right, I'm, I'm looking at my page 3, I don't know.
Section 3?
Um, let's see. Yeah, section 3, and it's.
Which is daily operations.
31, 32.
And it's 3Q.
Ooh.
Respond to and coordinate local emergency response?
Yes.
Okay.
Responding, respond to and coordinate local response to emergency situations in conjunction with the fire and EMS chief.
Oh, is that his title?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
If you saw any of the, uh, television interviews, when we were having the flooding and everything, in almost every case, the spokesperson was the town administrator. So, in that case, he would have to get the right answers from the police, fire, or the responders.
So, is the issue mainly his title?
Yeah, just the title.
So, I think there's another place where we talked about fire chiefs, that we'll make sure earlier on, like.
All right, I didn't.
Wait, wait, is it fire?
So, yeah, it was in, in C.
And, so what's the.
Fire EMS.
Fire and EMS chief.
Fire EMS or fire and EMS?
Fire and EMS, I believe.
Okay, make sure it's accurate.
One thing to look into, is there a general term that encompasses both of those roles? Is there, you know, are they, you know, town public safety officers or something?
Public safety officers.
Because we don't want to, you know, over time, right, these positions titles could evolve, but we always want it to be attached to the same person, so if we can generalize it out, you know, and if, and if, you know, and if the, and if the grand poobah of fire is not on the scene, you know, whoever's acting in that capacity. I mean, the, the whole point is that they're coordinating with emergency responders.
Yes.
Yeah, I would think, maybe changing that to public safety officers.
Right.
Is that, is that, is that an appropriate general term?
That would work, I think.
Okay.
But I guess this kind of begs the question, if the TA person is responsible for coordinating response to emergency situations, and you live up in New Hampshire, how are you going to do that?
Exactly the same way you do it if you live here and are in P-town community, right? I mean, it, they're, you know, whether or not you're actually physically here, somebody, somebody's going to call, one of you will call. Like, whoever.
All right, I see how this works, okay.
We're trying not to say that, but, you know.
Or the, or the public, or, you know, or, you know, or whoever's, you know, on point for public safety.
It goes, "Public, town administrator for, for public safety issues," and then clerk.
Didn't you see that? That's like, you see.
This is going to come in about two years, so I'm going to be out of that position, so, you know, you just kind of, like, prime the new person for that.
Then it moves to.
Oh, no, oh, no, because whatever, whatever spot I'm in, no, no, okay.
I mean, any, any of this stuff, you know, we, we can't expect somebody to be here twenty-four, seven.
Agreed.
You know, and, but they should be involved as they can be from wherever they are, and obviously, things like vacation or giving birth, or, you know, things that happen, like, take you away, you know, that just means someone's going to have to step up and do that.
Right, there's a procedure, there's a checklist, everyone does it, pull it out of your wallet, check, check, check.
And that's something, that's something that this person will.
Develop.
Develop, we talked about effective and efficient administration of all aspects of town operations. That's, that's where we're working, so it's very clear what happens.
Do you want to say, "public safety chiefs," so it's clear that it's the heads, not just whoever?
In, but in conjunction with public safety.
Well, do you want, but, yeah, but this is defining a person that's responsible, public safety could be whoever, anybody that works there. Yeah, so I think you want to make sure it's clear that it's the department head.
Public safety.
Do, do we have to say the department head is New York? Do we have to list some sort of chain of command? I would think officers report.
Okay.
Officers, yeah.
Officers and acting officers?
We have to assume that they also have a process for knowing who's in charge, and they will also be aware that, I mean, that's one of the things you do, right, at a crisis, is you, is the person in charge.
Right.
Most likely, you'll get something from town council on this one, too, is my guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the key, I think the key point with that is to make sure that there's no misconception that this person doesn't go and act alone, um, and they have to avoid it with somebody else, and by, and vice versa, and vice versa.
That you don't, yes.
That, that, you know, the others are expected to work with this person when it comes to those, so.
Yeah.
That's some of the nuance that kind of comes out, is you sort of, that we've talked about back and forth, about, you know, what's the intent of it's to try to avoid. That's some of the nuance that kinda comes out as you sort of, that we've talked about back and forth about, you know, what's the intent of it's to try to avoid confusion, so. Okay, so Q, just, still without the council issue, and I'll maybe change it to Q.
No, that's, you can keep going.
Okay, I'm going down to V.
V.
On that same section.
During temporary absence.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, so, explain this to me, can we explain it, cause maybe I'm, I had lots of red in that section, just like.
So this is, this is maternity leave, this is, town administrator's gonna be out of the office.
Or illness.
Or, you know, or illness or whatever, I'm not gonna be here, but somebody needs to do these things that keep the town running.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, you person, town clerk, shazam, I will, hey, board, I'm gonna make the town clerk be me for a while, is that okay? And you guys say yay or nay, so they can provide, they give temporary authority to do the mission critical duties, it does not give them authority to do the whole swath, but it's just the stuff that needs to be done by somebody.
Okay. So that's, is that clear to you?
So it's basically, there's two, this is sort of repeated, so that, under the, well, I repeat, it's basically saying that this person has the ability to tell you who that they, who they want to act in their role for up to twenty days, and you have to approve, and you, and that has to be approved by you.
So the, it's in section V A, the powers and duties of the temporary or acting administrator shall be limited to matters not admitting of delay.
Okay. And, and this is also something that is approved by the board, they make a recommendation.
Make them write, yes.
Yeah, that's why it says with the approval of the board.
With the approval of the board, yes.
And it's limited to only twenty days.
So basically, uh, basically, uh.
If it goes beyond that, then there's the other, I don't want to point to temporary, I think that goes back, that's back, uh.
Twenty working days is in V.
Under, under the board's section K.
Such delegation. Such delegation shall be made by letter filed with the town clerk and the board.
Yes. Yeah.
Do they need and approval of the board, or just?
Well, the, the, it says with the approval of the board, but they're, they're, but they're making the delegation.
Okay.
It's a formal process to make that delegation.
Got you.
All right, so do we have to define temporary, cause is temporary a week I have the flu, or is Beth was saying, I'm on a maternity leave or paternity leave for twelve weeks?
No, no, twenty days, this is only for twenty days.
No, no.
Up to twenty days.
Up to twen, up to, a month, basically.
Yeah.
Twenty, it's twenty working days, so basically a month.
So if some, so if somebody's gonna, I'm going to Europe for two weeks, I'm gonna appoint this person to act on my behalf.
To do, you know, to do the two or three things that need to be done in preparation for the upcoming day.
Where I have to fly, or I'm gonna take care of my parent, you know, I mean, it could, it could be, it could be, it could be as short as.
I'm moving out of town.
Probably.
Yeah. Because, um, one of the things, one of the things we see this doing is, is protecting the board from suddenly having to take on all the town administrative duties. Particularly when the administrative pieces with any luck, systems are in place and those processes and procedures are clear on the administrative side of the house, which are not necessarily things you guys are gonna have all the details at your fingertips. So depending on the types of things that they expect to be, have to be dealt with in the next short period of time, they can pick somebody who understands what needs to be done.
So all this is gonna be spelled out because I can see temporary being, hey, I'm gonna have a baby, everybody start preparing, you know, months from now, or, oh my god, I have to get on a, on a plane tonight and go. So I would think that you would have.
Yeah, that's, it's all, it's all temporary.
Right, but I would think that you would have all those processes already outlined for the prepared, for the expected versus the unexpected of.
Okay.
Yeah, I, this type of language is pretty standard in almost every one that we looked at that was well-written, um, I don't know if we made any, I don't remember if we made any tweaks, I think the, the only part.
The number of days we talked about, I think, cause some people have longer periods of time, I believe.
Or they do, or they phrase it differently, they might've said for a month or working days or whatever, and I think the only other part we may have focused on was making sure that it's, um, you know, there's this limiting of power, so it's not like everything that's necessarily outlined here is the powers, it's the absolute, you know, core stuff that has to get done, picked up.
Yeah, this, you can go back to section two, where it says that the town administrator is gonna be gone for thirty days, the board can appoint a temporary town administrator at that time.
So if it's, you know, something, if something gets out of hand or, you know, it's gonna be gone longer than anticipated, then you guys have a process.
Okay. I mean, so before, before we go to three-two, so scooting back up, and again, this is just coming from management land, uh, on line P, keep and complete records. So it says a full report, um, are there going to be specifics which are going to be needed to be included in the report, because I don't wanna write a fifteen-page letter about something on Paul and a paragraph about Wayne. So you know, you wanna make it consistent.
That's up to you, that's up, that's up to you.
You'll never be able to find two phrases.
I'll never find, no, okay. Never, never, never get Wayne to just one paragraph, all right, okay.
She'd know that by now.
Well, I know, but again, just looking at a full report, because I don't want someone to say, well, she likes him, so she's going easy on him before she's gonna vend.
Yeah, no. Yeah, well, that's, well, that's something that Chris and I had this conversation about, about, even about, um, you know, reporting or authority stuff and, you know, she said you've had some experience where you get this feeling that maybe some experience with people you run across, they don't actually, your board is informed about certain things or whatever, so I mean, that's one aspect where we talked about, there's, there's a couple things, one is that reporting, there's one also about financial reporting. So it's in here that basically says you don't just get to do whatever, you have to, uh, keep the records and you have to record them and do whatever, so that's something that isn't defined here, but that can be defined as in your policies and procedures, cause you're the poli, as according to this, you're the policy and guideline setting board, so you said that this is what we expect in a report, so if, you know, of detail, so that's, that's a way that.
All right.
I think you respect the content and the frequency of it.
Yeah, so you get that.
In conjunction with the town administrator.
Yeah, P just.
That you picked up one of my next questions, all right, so they've.
That's, that's why, that's why G says keep for complete repair good records and it says annually submit to the board unless requested to do more, um, so more frequently, so you could, that could be something you would change.
Okay.
You know, while, while they're new, you might want them to report on a quarterly basis after you feel like they've been doing this, like this be, this quarterly report is taking so much of your time, I'd rather see them actually doing something and.
Correct.
We're fine with an annual report at this point, so maybe, you know, it just depends on how you define, but it gives you, it gives you guys and the expectation to, yeah, you, you have to report to us.
Okay, I mean, it's kinda like the same, um, same for, uh, sentence S about receiving and acting on questions and complaints, you know, again, it's a general question, but it sounds like it comes back to us. You know, questions on the end, how will complaints, you know, or questions be submitted, in writing, through meetings, conversations at the general store?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, I mean.
Okay.
But, but it allows them to act on them instead of having to come to you for everything.
Okay.
Cause if they can handle it, then it.
Cause I mean, and, and they're certainly different, you know, and that goes back to almost a, you know, there's that informal resolution, you know, you know, I'm having trouble with the building inspector, you know, where now somebody, somebody calls the select person they know the best and it's like, I can't get this thing done, help, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Those, those now get to go to the town administrator, um, and some of those are just a stick your head in the office, hey, what's going on with this, and that's not a formal complaint.
Right.
But something like problems with Phil that would have, that before it gets to the lawsuit, potentially a formal complaint filed with the town administrator's office, you know, when, when that part of the process isn't done, you know, when you go to court, they're like, what did you do to attempt to resolve this? And, you know, when the answer is hired a lawyer, when there's a process in place over here that they chose not to use.
And that's what I guess I'm just getting, getting to, is that I want, I don't wanna bog this person down in paperwork, dear lord, no, but I need it to be consistent, so it's a process everyone understands, it's the same way, I mean, so even if it is a conversation at the dump or being tracked down in the community garden, which that never happens, um.
I mean, it could just be like.
What'd you get for leaving her the house?
Well, I mean, you know, what's the, what's the complaint?
I'm gonna like paint my car different colors if it looks like something, and find me.
Yeah, but I mean, but it could be, but it could be as simple as, you know, somebody comes and complains, or comes in the office and complains and they handle it and however that person tells you, like, they shoot you all email and say, cars came up. I mean, I still remember years ago when I was on the board, there was an issue of somebody planted bushes too close, what they, somebody thought was too close to the road, and they were complaining, and it came in, and it was at our meeting, and there was all this, and it's just like, I just took it by, and those bushes are still there, and they're huge now, so, and they do block with you, I'm not telling you where it was, but, but.
I mean, you need the level of, right, you need the level of balance, but you also need the level of consistency, so that no one can come back and say, well, Chris didn't do anything, well.
Oh, shoot. It was in the net, yeah, these, you know, most of all the things I dealt with this week, are, you know, you guys will have to decide that, but I think the thing, the point is that they get to act, and you don't have to have all these little chucky issues come to a formal meeting and wait two weeks and get on the agenda that you can deal with and move on to the next fair fish to fry.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Wow, you've been a little worked, didn't you just say?
I think, I think P ought to be, I think and is extra in that sentence, I think it's, in, in, in P, I think it should just be keep complete records.
Where?
Oh, shoot.
Definitely.
All right.
Now.
I mean, it still makes sense as a sentence, but it's not as useful a direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, I probably read it as keep and complete.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, can I, do you have more?
No, they're just, they're other, they're things I'm fine with.
Okay. Section three-two, personnel and human resources.
Chris?
Um, I had one on an I, just a clarification, I guess.
With approval of the board.
Yeah, this is, yes, so the administrator shall, with the approval of the board, negotiate all collective bargaining agreements on behalf of the town, except for the school department. Um, I don't know how they'll do it when they're regionalized, but right now, when they do the Tohato, um, contract, they ha, they take turns between Berlin and Boylston, um, sitting in on negotiations, you, you know, one, one, one year when they do the contract, Boylston selectmen will sit in, and they still have a selectman sit in even though they have a town administrator, and then, um, the next time they have to go through contract negotiations, the Berlin selectmen choose a member of the Berlin board to sit in, so I just didn't know if.
Are they, is it, are they actually, are they, they're observers or are they actually?
They are actually on the, the negotiating board, uh, and I don't know whether that's school policy or in their regional agreement.
That's an interesting.
But, um.
That's something worth researching.
I just want, you know, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Well, the question here would be is, depending on what they want, would you wanna delegate this person sitting in on your behalf to do that, or do you guys wanna have to be the actual people to go?
Well, I guess if it's, I don't remember being in the new regional agreement, but if it is, then I feel like, you know, if Boylston's gonna sit in, I suppose Berlin should sit too.
Yeah.
Yeah, spoil and have, spoil and have both the town administrator and a select.
I'll put a, I'll put, I'll put a, I'll put a bug in this school department.
See what you, see what you get out of that.
I'll put a bug in the school department's here about this issue and find out.
All right.
I was at the Berlin meeting last night, I think I did.
It's actually very interesting, because that's one of the.
Well, it may not be in there in that way, so who, so who even knows how that is addressed, I mean, it may not be changed, it may not even be changed by any.
It's true. Right. It may be. It may be policy rather than regional agreement, and I don't know if their policies will change or not.
Yeah.
Um, but I think if Boylston selectman is gonna sit in, then Berlin should too.
I think the point of this was just to, to, the point of this was to exclude that this person is not negotiating the school's collective bargaining agreements.
Oh, yes.
That's the point of this, but you're, you're asking a sort of different nuance of the participation that goes on now, and that may be really inside of this and not be a problem, so.
Right.
Right. And, and it does say with the approval of the board.
Oh, yeah.
So.
It could almost work either way.
You could almost, you could almost, almost take out that phrase, cause the board's never going, I mean, they're not going to send them off to do collective bargaining on school.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I don't mind that with the approval of the board is in there, but you could almost leap off the except for the school department.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I think some of this, I think some of this is just to clarify their independence, so that, that it doesn't get muddy that this person says, oh, now we're good to do this, so yeah.
Right. No, we're not. And it's only for the, the, uh, Tohato, which is the region.
Yeah.
And I think because there's two towns in the region, that's why they would take turns having, you know, one member of one board of selectmen and then, and the next time it was the next town, um, they're for, a member of their board of selectmen.
All right, so is it, is it policy or is it, um, something else?
Yeah. But either way, maybe the language could just be, you know.
I don't think it's hurting anything the way that it is, yeah, okay, I don't think this is hurting anything, but I think it's just to clarify.
Doctorate a little bit. Right.
Okay.
No, good.
Hi, good.
So just, hang on a second, I had one, I had one thing I wanna, um, in G, section three-two G, the last sentence there is the board shall retain the authority to execute union contract agreements. I believe that is redundant with the last sentence in I, which says all final agreements must be approved and executed by the board.
Where?
So the G, the last sentence in G, which doesn't really have anything to do with disciplinary.
You're saying it's redundant.
Yeah, cause it says the board shall retain the authority to execute union contract agreements, which is in G.
Not necessarily.
Is that?
What about the police union? They're saying execute it, make sure that it's carried out, or you're saying execute.
Right, but doesn't, but both of them say, both of them say execute, which is why, so I don't know if, if there's, if they're two different things we're trying to say here?
Oh, it doesn't say execute.
Does that come from Fairhaven, did that come from Fairhaven though? I don't know if Fairhaven's in.
So I don't know if that's, we have to make a decision, I don't.
It could, it could be, it, it could be that because we pulled from different sources, it could be that we pulled one from one, one from another, and it got redundant.
And I don't understand the difference between approving something and executing something?
Executing means making sure that it's followed.
Yeah. Probably the approval.
Doing, and approval is yes, we're going to do this, and execution is the doing.
Just get going.
Yes, making sure that it's followed, yes.
So maybe they both should be there as it is, as long as they don't say two different things that are in conflict, it's not necessarily the worst thing.
Right.
But we can ask council that too.
But it certainly does, but I also don't think it belongs in G, because it doesn't actually have anything to do with, uh, disciplinary suspension. It's just kind of, it's kind of buried in some place, it doesn't actually.
Right. And the only question that I had, um, in this section, and my lettering is off, I apologize, but if you look for the sentence that says act as the chief procurement officer, and it's got a fifty thousand dollar, a couple of those in there, so I'll let you, I'll let you find it, catch up with me.
You're right.
That's I.
Yeah, I have an I.
That's back under section three-one.
Yeah.
Ah, okay.
Um, so my only question about halfway down through the paragraph where it says exceeds fifty thousand shall require the approval of the board, should FinCom or should finance be in here as well, cause that's a awfully high dollar amount.
Still not found you.
I'm right here, I'm right next to you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, yeah, so, so I, act as chief procurement.
Not that I.
Not that I, see, and I have a couple I's, do you have a couple I's?
We have a lot of I's.
Yeah, I know, four.
True. Not that, that must be.
I know, I think my.
It's, it's, it's under section three-one, Chris.
Okay, here we go, I found it.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, just on the, I was just curious about the, the dollar amount, if it needs somebody else to approve it to besides.
I would think this bad amount, like the fifty thousand dollars, would already have been approved in the town budget. And if, if the administrator wants to go out and get three quotes, he would select which one he wanted and then have it approved.
And have that approved, where we, we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars to do this thing, I've got quotes for forty-two, forty-five, and forty-seven, and here's the one I think we had to go with.
So your question is, why, you're questioning if we should have FinCom in addition to the board, is.
I mean, it just looks like a high dollar amount for.
Yeah. I, I don't know what the practice is now, yeah, I don't, and, but once, you could force that, if you just, but if you do that, it could also then, it would then mean you always have to do that.
Yeah. I know.
So when you do that, you, that's the kind of stuff that they warned us, is that if you get so specific, you can bind your hands and not need to do that.
Not do anything, yeah.
So you, so you as practice might say, we wanna talk to FinCom before we do this, but if you put it in there, then you have to, and if you have a, if you have a problem with forums, um.
Then you have a problem with the forum.
Once, once the system is established, I would like to think that there would be communication between the administer, administrator, FinCom, and selectmen.
and selectmen, so that, you know, this doesn't pop out of, out of the wild blue.
This is, right, this is not.
Then it's already been somewhere there for people to look at.
Yeah, I think the point of this was to say they can act under this level and above this, it requires approval, so that they don't go offside and stuff that they shouldn't, it's given parameters to make it run efficiently, um, and just make sure that it's not left unclear as to what you do over.
That's fine.
And that's, and that was again seen in a lot of different, some had different amounts, I mean, I think so, I don't know if they were higher.
Right.
Some had, some, I think, I think we saw, but I think we saw this number a couple of places, um, in, some, some town with teen, two.
Like twenty-five thousand, I think it was.
Yeah.
Just a couple of those.
That was well. Alright. Yeah, again, I don't, I don't want to be so specific that we back ourselves into a corner, but also want.
So there's an approval, the point of this is to say there's a checking balance on this person's power, and you're the checking balance.
Okay.
And you can always say, well, you can always, let's run this by FinCom, you know, or whatever, right?
Alright.
Yeah.
In your.
Or the treasurer or.
Or, or whomever, yeah.
Right.
Okay, alrighty, I'm good.
So just to back up, I want to just clarify, so we're gonna figure out about taking this up, if, if we need to just remove this, or do we need to move it to?
If we, if we need to remove this, or if, is it covered, and that may be, that may be a lawyer question, if, if they believe it's redundant or if it.
Move, what was that section, move to section, okay, alright, check that out. Sorry.
Um, does procurement?
If I did.
It's under, that's under, it's under general daily, should that be under financial?
No, procurement's procurement, financial is all the financial part of the.
Okay, I, like, procurement, you buy things, it involves money, I, it goes up the finance section.
That's the operational part.
Okay.
So anything else on personnel and human resources? If not, then it'd be three financial. Section three three.
I don't think they had anything. And I figured that section four, five, six, seven, and eight was probably like sort of a mandatory thing.
Yeah, they're sort of the boilerplate type-ish things to basically give a person.
I think we got rid of section seven.
Oh, really?
Uh, there is a, no, we didn't, we, it was redundant, we removed what, what section.
We removed four sections, yes, there, there used to be nine sections.
Uh, they said the same thing as part seven, that's just, that was just a, it doesn't change anything, it was already in there.
So the only question that I had was section four, second line, the administrator may, without notice, cause the affairs of any division, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I guess my question is, why without notice?
It allows them, it allows them to not be hamstrung in the event that giving notice.
Allows someone to.
Might be down to base a situation or allow somebody to.
Maybe sweep something or.
Exactly. Yeah. This is how you can tell if anybody ever watches.
That's correct, that's correct, okay, alright.
Yeah.
You know, it is not, it is not an expectation that they're gonna be running around rummaging in people's filing cabinets or whatever, but in the, in the event
If you have the need to.
that you need to, a lot of this is kind of, some of this like, well, of course, people are going to work with them. But you notice we had to write it in here just to provide that baseline that, that gives this person the authority, if necessary, they can be like, no, really.
Yeah, we just wanted to ensure that they were.
It's, you, you have to do these things.
Alright.
That's not a lot.
I expected a lot more than that.
Oh, that's great.
So, um, so we have those few items that we'll ask about with council. I think one thing that's on here with council, do we take it out? It was a section, is it the part that talks about the, are we gonna take that out with the fire or something?
So this has gone to us, Representative Notten and Andy Council?
Sure, yeah.
And were we going to wait to send it to DOR until we heard back from lawyers? Was that correct, or were we gonna?
I think we need to discuss that, but I'm, I don't think we should wait much longer.
No, because they'll have, they'll be, they'll need the same six weeks that everyone else is gonna take, and so if they have something to say about it.
Yeah, we just wanted to send it to the. Division of Local Services, just because we want to, they see these things all the time.
They were involved, you know, in the beginning.
Beginning, so.
So this, this means that potentially council can see this three times, because they're gonna see our edits, they're gonna see Notten's edits, so here's a question, what happens if there's a conflict? If we say, oh, we believe it's X, and somebody says, oh, no, it's Y, who gets the final say?
Lawyers.
Right?
I mean, I mean, if there's a, if there's a.
Well, we're not, well, we're, well, we're not a, we're not a, so that's.
No, I mean, if, if there's a.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, it's, it's almost like, you know, legal is, is looking at this from us, legal is looking at this from Representative Notten, legal is looking at this from their point of view. So it, I guess to me, and again, the way that I work, it would have been nice
And it would be interesting if it was.
for all the information to come back, maybe from us and from Notten, and to go one time to the committee instead of one, and a two, and a three.
One time to council.
One time to council, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Because if there's a conflict.
If there is a conflict, but that, that they have to review it ultimately anyway.
Agreed.
Like, so, and I, and particularly because like you didn't have, you guys didn't have very much, all these various surprised.
I mean, we pulled, we pulled, we, we pulled a lot of this, I mean, it wasn't like we were fancy, yeah, we've, we've, I mean, a lot of this just comes from stuff that's pretty.
We get a lot. Out of things that have been lawyer. I don't think we get it.
Past, so I, I don't see a lot, I think it's just gonna be minor stuff. I, I would just, the only thing I would say is, you know, if there's something that they like say, oh, you put this in here and we've seen this cause a problem, would be like from Division of Local Services.
That would be.
Right. You know, and so I wouldn't recommend that.
Right.
And we just don't know that because we hadn't heard that in our research.
And then usually, I think, when they make a recommendation, generally we go with the recommendation, but the, the board of selectmen could say, no, we like it that way.
Yeah, so I mean, it's, I think, I think our biggest thing is to just make sure there's not something that's, would send it up and be like a problem, but I mean, even if when you send it to the legislature, they could be like, you know, and send it back with however they want it approved, but.
Can I ask you a favor? That when you get the feedback from either the town council or from Notten, that you copy us or?
Oh, gosh, sure, yeah.
To us, so that we can see what, yeah, all of us.
All of us. Yeah, sure, yeah. Oh, no, I mean, Lisa's, Lisa's got, we're, we're at a point now where, I mean, that was more from a, you know, liaison aspect, was more just to kind of build it out, but I mean, we're at the end stage, you all need to be aware. Just as when we came before we went to town meeting, was like, this is the final, kind of like, you know, we would do that the same way.
Okay, just so that we know where the conflicts are.
Yeah.
Like, if there are any.
Come on, it'd be awesome.
Yep, yeah, we'll do that.
And, and there may well, and there may well be disagreements on the best way to do X, Y, or Z, which then we get to pick which way.
Right.
Yeah, based on what we think works best for what we're trying to do.
Yeah, there's not.
So we have.
Did you give us any timeframe, Bill? Did you hear, did you hear anything back and all?
No, but it's been, it's been a week and a half, so I really didn't expect.
Right, it's only been, right, that's not long with the time of year.
So can I, can I ask a question of you guys? What's, do you, because I never know the deadlines on, so we've got town, the special meeting, is, is the October fifteenth.
Has that date been set?
Yeah, they set, they set it.
Yes. Okay.
So backing up from that, publishing, this would all have to, I'm assuming this would have to go out with it, when it, like, this, would have to go out with whatever's mailed to the voters, so that goes out when?
What, right. And it has to be like fourteen days or something.
So that means the first of October?
Yeah, October.
That's printed in the mail, so.
So it means, so.
A little special town meeting is a shorter window, I don't remember when, Mary would know.
So we're talking about September twenty-fourth, probably really on the outside, in terms of us having a final final.
Final final. So, but even before that, though, we'll probably be discussing this. I would imagine having a public forum, even if it's not final final, or?
I would, I mean.
I mean, we can just have one public forum to share this with people and that's it, or?
Well.
I think the.
I mean, you, go ahead.
I think our next step is to get the, uh, what we have out to the department heads and the other people, and start getting their.
Yeah. That's sort of a question, I know you've had some emails going back and forth about your department meeting in detail and stuff like that, so I don't know what anybody else's thoughts were on how we share this.
Because potentially, let's see, on the thirteenth.
And that's just it, and that's why I wanted to put you guys on the agenda for the thirteenth, you know, and give you a block of time to figure out how to take this and disseminate it out there and say, here's where we are, here's where we're going, here's the next steps, just, I mean, you know, obviously, probably not go through it in detail like we did, but at least give people enough information so they understand it.
Yeah, well, so.
Or share, or share.
Well, I would, I would assume we'd give it to them in advance.
So that they can come in.
Yeah, you could do that.
And then they, they, and they can send copies in advance and hit the highlights and then take specific questions.
And we'll just kind of go with like a highlight. They've got specific questions about what is this.
Yeah, I think we could.
Okay, so here's, alright, so here's a question for you, so you give this out to all the department heads and they read it, and they go through and they have multiple questions. You've already sent it off to Notten and you've already sent it off to law. What do you do with those questions that are gonna come up in a month?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think it's, I don't know, so I'll say this for myself, I guess I look at like, with all the due diligence we've done in the past year and listen to what everybody,
you know, wanted and their concerns were about how, you know, the level of power and all that other kind of stuff that people felt comfortable with, and ability to act and all those types of things. I mean, I think we've drafted this with all that in mind, so I think, you know, I think at some point there has to be a decision about, well, this is how we want it to work, or how people report, or who appointments are. So if you guys, as the appointing authority, this really affects your department more than, I mean, it's just basically saying this person's a coordinator that basically steps in the middle, so I don't know what they would necessarily say, but, you know, I don't know how much we would change or not change about, I mean, if somebody had a real specific concern about supervisory issues, then I guess we'd look at it, but if you are looking at this at this point and saying, you know,
This is what we want, this makes sense.
This makes sense, in, in the, in the, um, you know, the, the, uh, reporting structure, which we already basically had shown from a, from a, uh, org chart, you know, that's already kind of been put out there, so this isn't really adjusting that necessarily, it's just we already sort of put that in the middle and showed that, um, going forward, but maybe that's something we would probably want to do again to be clear. I, I don't know what we would get. So I mean, I don't know that it would necessarily be a big shift unless, I mean, the only shift that I guess I would anticipate is not that, it's not about, or we don't want to listen to what everybody has to say, it's like, we want to make sure that they're all clear on what this is to some degrees, or something that's totally out of the blue, yeah, I guess I would have to go back, but I feel like we know it best from looking at what everybody else does and what the intents were.
It's not like we inv- inv- invented it ourselves.
But that's my point, but. Oh, I agree, but that's my point exactly, what you just said, we have gone through this, Berlin town folk have not, so I don't want the perception to be they decided what this is and they're not listening to me.
Oh, no, I mean, well, I think we listened to everybody before this, I mean, we still want to, I don't know what those changes or suggestions could potentially be.
Great, then there may be none, I'm just playing devil's advocate on this side, saying, I don't want the perception being, oh, great, we're gonna hire somebody that they've decided who it's gonna be.
I. Yeah, and, and I think that's the other part, I would say that the biggest part that everybody's had concerns all the way through this has more to do with who you hire.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so it's really about, you know, it's not, I mean, the hiring process, all, all this special act is gonna tell you, there's a hiring process and it, it's, it, it doesn't tell you what that is, so I mean, what's you gonna call it? For that hire, I mean, you guys could change potentially however that hiring process, maybe we're gonna make a recommendation.
Okay. Like, you guys are in charge of it.
But, but, you know, some of these things, if people say, wow, we don't want this person, or we don't want a person that's gonna have, be able to work overtime and do this, or do that, I mean, some of that's gonna come down to it, and I mean, that was another part about it deliverable to, one of the things we're asking for from all the different towns that we're gonna contact is, A, that, um, job descriptions, B, the hiring process, and C, what their contracts are, if they have one. Because we're not gonna develop the contract, you guys want to develop a contract, so we'll be able to give you materials to say, this is how other places structure their contracts and what's in them, what's not in them, how they work.
The one, the one question I've been hit with several times by a couple of different people is, well, you know, is he gonna go, are he or she gonna go to evening meetings? And if so, do, do they get the next morning off?
Oh, yeah, no, they're not, no.
This is not an hourly position.
There's the that there's the that level of question.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it all gonna be content, content, content?
The special act wouldn't address this any.
Exactly, exactly.
What I think will happen is soon we get approval to town meeting, send a special act off to the legislature, and then we've got several months to work on a job description, an ad, uh, what else is, whether we wanna do all the recruiting in-house or get an outside recruiter, because we can't say, okay, let's hire him until the budget gets approved and made.
Right, yeah, so I mean, anything you're gonna get from us, you know, prior, that would be like a draft, job description to help with that, but you guys are gonna still be, I mean, we're not the ones that are gonna develop the. This really says what the job description is to a degree, the other part is just more.
It'll be the personnel committee's job.
Which is that?
So a question for you, Beth, you had said something a while ago about if there are, well, we could do this and we could do that and we could do this, who gets the final say? Is it you? Is it us? Is it us?
We could do one.
For the special act.
Oh, like, wait, if 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 they send back, we see what you're trying to do here, here are a couple ways you can you can go about it, if, I mean, there may be clear reasons why one of those don't work.
Correct.
For us, um, and we can make a recommendation to you guys, or, you know, this is what we think we wanna do, you know, and a lot of it depends, I don't think this is gonna happen, but so we can we can ask for input from,
Right.
you know, the the department, department heads in particular, depending on what it is, if it's something that doesn't affect anybody.
Mm-hmm.
I I.
Then we can just look around and see what we think would work best, and we'll be like, what do you think? And you guys will be like, eh.
Not so much, yeah.
Or whatever, you know, I don't think it's a.
Yeah, I would say, I I would say we've been a pretty collaborative group, you know, from the outset and try to, you know, listen to what everybody has to say and looked at this and everything else, but I would say just as like who has the, cause you asked the question, was the final say?
For both.
Well, I would say that this this committee was formed by town meeting, so town meeting's gonna appoint to this committee to make its independent decision, if if it came down to a push come to shove of, we really felt one way, and you really felt a different way, and we didn't wanna change it, then it could end up that it would go to town meeting that way, and then we have that discussion there.
Or just time wrestling?
Probably, but 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 I mean, that but I mean, that's not our intent that we would come to that.
Oh, no, agreed.
But but if but if there was something, I can't imagine what that would be, but but if you wanted to know that who's final, I would say they appointed us and
The top of the establishment.
Yes, correct.
They appointed us.
Right.
We report through, they said you appoint us, but they're the one, you selected us on the committee, but it was their charge, so.
But you have, it was their mandate, right, it was their, they approved the charge.
So that's how I'm, and I had this conversation with Tim about that, so I, so I think we're open to whatever, I I mean, I don't wanna see something go there that there's gonna be a huge argument unless, I can't imagine any of us doing that unless it's, I can't even imagine.
I mean, I feel like, I feel like we've done a really good, going back to what you said, we talked to a lot of people who, and I think we've done a really good job of putting in language to help address certain types of fears, and there're gonna be some things that definitely, you know, no, laying out the pros of the hiring process and particularly pulling from the superintendent's process, I think that's actually gonna be a great place for us to start for that, um, and a lot of this is, what does this mean for me? Right, that's that's a lot of the conversation with the people who work in town, how does this affect what I do? Oh, this gives this person authority to help me make the hire I need to make, right?
If if somebody, if, I mean, there could be an argument, if they if they say it's all fine, I mean, that example of the, you know, filling positions if they're open for ninety days, there could be somebody that doesn't like that, and it could get through council, and I don't know if we thought really strongly about that, and might say, we want that to go, see what.
Well, you know, I don't say who'll be the people at the town meeting.
At town meeting, right, if somebody can amend, they can amend it.
They may amend, they may.
I think, and and I would say that that's also then from day one, we've talked about, we don't think that anything that starts, anything of this detail that starts to get all kinds of crazy amendments on the town floor, it can totally change what that is, that doesn't really help the process. So our goal is to be able to understand, I mean, we've been trying to say like, well, who are the people that are gonna get up and say X, Y, Z and understand what those issues are, cause that doesn't really help solve the problem, I, this is the time to have those discussions up, so if if it came to that, I'm sure we would both know exactly who's on the opposite side of an argument, and then, yeah, it would just get decided, like, what's that, but I would really hate people to sustain, well, I don't like P and I, we don't know what amendments on the floor look like, um, that would be really sad, so we.
Let's say it could happen, which I hope it doesn't, it's what just like you're could say, okay, we approve your special act, but now you have to have a town election to approve.
Yeah, so we don't know what that will be.
I don't know.
We hope that doesn't happen, so because that don't delay anything.
And now, what's the criteria for an election?
I don't know.
Don't know.
In, we we were originally told that that was, that for a special act, that's just what the process was, it was approved by the legislature and by the voters, but.
And add a add a no, add a ballot by ballot.
On by ballot, at a for a town meeting, right, and and both both a town meeting and a ballot approval and a legislative approval, but we have seen special acts that have not had to go to ballot.
First is a town meeting. And so that's how this goes.
So that's, so we tried to write this like those.
Well, and that was gonna be my question, how often have you seen this go to a town vote?
Most of the time, but old ones, like the recent ones.
They 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 said.
Yeah.
Are moving quicker through because people are learning from somebody else's mistake.
Are moving quicker through.
Well, it's not even going through the legislature, it's just, is it required?
It's just, is it required to go back for ballot?
Or is it not, so we don't know what the answer to that's gonna be, they could come back and say, this, you'll have to do the ballot vote, and then we'd have to wait till the May, the May election, the May one to go to our ballot, so I mean, we don't know.
Right.
I mean, I think, I think we felt comfortable doing it this way because we, I mean, we all saw the sort of unanimous approval, like, everybody sort of sees the need for this position, and everybody's like, could we get it done yesterday, so we're kind of hoping it can just move in that direction, um, but even without that, it will still require the funding, I think it would still be a moot point, but, I don't know, we'll see.
So potentially, I mean, if we don't hear back from people.
So you're, so it's the thirteen, thirteen?
September thirteen.
September thirteenth, so we could, I'd wanna send the draft out like the fifth.
Yeah, I don't wanna, like, people like, I would say, a few weeks before.
A few on? Really?
So that they just have a chance to read it.
Oh, you think, wait, you're right, no.
Correct, so.
And and to be like, and don't freak out if they're gonna ask a question.
Yeah, you talk to the department, yeah.
Yeah, talk to the department on the thirteenth.
I don't think there's a lot of freak out in here, but it's.
No, I don't think that they would freak out either, I mean, but you wanna give the people an opportunity to under, kind of like I did, and make all my questions, you know, so that it makes sense now, and, you know, you have enough time at the meeting on the thirteenth to put a small presentation together, or just be so bold and say,
The problem is it's the it's labor day.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think we're gonna send it out next week.
Well, we can listen to them now, but if we haven't heard anything back.
Got questions? You read the document.
That's.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, it's really broken up in sections, you know, for those reasons, I mean, in in all honesty, you gotta read this, cause if you haven't read it, I mean, and that's the other opportunity too, it's like, if you read, we're gonna answer questions if you have them, you have them, then go back and read it and then ask us questions, because, you know, ultimately, you really have to read it to understand, you know, I mean, I I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't tell you what's gonna be important to you, I mean, if if, to me, I think that the hot issues for us, um, as we've created this, have been the financial, um, work, the budget development aspects, you know, and then the personnel issues of appointing, those are probably the bigger
And read it and read it.
Correct, correct.
issues, the rest is just to make things flow a little more smoothly and can they act, and as long as you feel comfortable, I think, you guys feel comfortable about how this person is.
I do, I just, I'm, um, I guess I'm a little nervous about any kind of feedback you're gonna get from someone else, that's why I'm asking you to share it with us.
Oh, sure, of course, of course.
Uh, you know, I wouldn't wanna see any kind of substantial change to it without coming back to the board.
Oh, yeah, I think I think what they're, my view of what Norton's office and town council, cause they're not gonna tell us how to run the town and how we want hours to be, they're gonna be like, I stepped on a landmine, you put something in here that conflicts with something, eh, you can't do that.
Right. Correct.
Yeah, I just feel trying to figure, remember, it's a part that referenced the, it's one of your other special act, it referenced the, um, the strong chief, did we take that out of here? I can't even remember.
Yes.
Does not seem to ever mention it.
We took it, we took it, we took it out.
Yeah, we did.
There was some.
We referred, we we referenced the the general laws on fire, on fire.
The chapter? We did, where?
Yes. Uh.
Cause I.
It's about, it's hiring, it's under personnel.
Well, there's, if you're looking for section, section forty-two of chapter forty-eight.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yes.
Uh, H, under three point two.
Three to, three point two H is where we refer to master.
So is that, is that the strong chief one for sure? I don't know that we looked at that in detail, so.
But that's also boilerplate that we.
That's, that was one of the questions we wanted to ask because it, we saw other ones talking about that, and so we, we looked at it and we just said, we just wanna make sure it's.
Well, you'll be sending it to the fire chief.
Oh, wow.
Yep, so. He and he will have things to say so far.
And he'll, and he'll read it.
Just like we referenced chapter thirty, so it was, it it was just because to make sure that there's no conflict and being clear on that, so.
September thirteenth, so we go to the.
So the the point is if we're in of that, then I would say shortly thereafter.
Eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth?
We probably wanna have a, a public, well, the public forum, the public forum is not to necessarily change anything, it's just to inform people of what the intent is at that point, cause it's gonna be printed and.
Wait, 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 it's gotta be printed the twenty, printed by the twenty-fourth.
Well, that's why I'm just.
So we could do, well, it's seven o'clock, the thirteenth.
We're gonna, we would, we would, we would do a public forum after, after the department head, so.
Which we have seven, so the week of the seventeenth, if we do it early that week, if if people have good points or ways to reframe something, potentially we can tweak things that are, you know, if they're the small changes.
I just, I'm just trying to figure when we wanna do a public forum, and I am not worried about the.
Right. Seventeenth, twelfth.
I'm not worried about changes per se, I'm just worried about making sure we have the opportunity to.
Well, I think at our meeting, why don't we outline the whole timeline, wouldn't we, wanna sell things out to the department heads and go from there?
We'll do that.
Fine. Well, it's almost seven o'clock.
Okay, sounds good.
And yeah, I wait to answer your question, uh, section forty-two has to do with the establishment of fire departments, appointment of the fire chief, compensation removal, powers and duties.
Yeah, so that's, that is what that is.
Duties, just like saying the word duty.
Thank you. Looking it up.
Okay, okay. Okay, so do you all have anything else for us?
Yeah.
You you have, are you male addressed?
We reserve the right.
That's right, we reserve the right.
Right, yeah.
Of course.
To offer you up to the department heads on the thirteenth, you guys are going first, by the way, so.
Oh, excellent.
We'd like individual flatterings, please.
That could be arranged, no, we we we'd have you guys go first and then you can do your, do your stuff and then go, so you don't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Okay.
Unless you'd like to.
Unless you'd like to.
Because, yeah.
Well, we are. We are opening up, we are opening the warrant on August twenty-seventh.
Okay.
We are closing the warrant, uh, anybody have a calendar? I guess I can look at my phone.
Probably, what, two, like the tenth of September or something?
It was like. Yes, it was going to be the tenth, however, the planning board, I believe, is having a meeting.
At night?
Either the tenth or the eleventh, so we may hold it open until like the twelfth.
The twelfth, that Wednesday.
Um, and whenever the it needs to go to print is when we'll need, start the exact language.
Um, and Mary, I'll send us email.
And warn you?
And warn us, what she needs.
She's good at that.
Those those emails are important.
Yes. Just as a point, just to go back to this lovely detailed stuff. Um, one thing we have to, uh, just clarify with council too, um, we had a conversation about, uh, last week or last minute, about that appointing, uh, the ability to appoint an interim or a acting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just to make sure that that gives you the, is the select the authority to hire an interim, because that's been the process in a lot of other towns, is that while you're, while you're willing to, you know, do your whole process to hire your permanent one, now that you've got the ability, you want a lot of towns hire these seasoned individuals to come in and start that organizational cleanup, um, process, um, to sort of help the process along. Um, and sometimes that makes it easier for the new person not to be the, absorb all the bullets first, whatever, so.
So are we thinking that the, we, this will be funded for at next annual town meeting? Okay.
As we.
But but you can't design a hiring process.
Yeah, the only, the only.
Until then, so.
The only hang up there is if we have to do a special availability.
It wouldn't necessarily.
After, after the town meeting.
Yeah, so you'd end up.
So you have to have the money in hand before you can go out and even.
Uh, yeah, do an interim, yeah.
We 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 can.
Well, we'll we'll know whether you need the vote well before the annual town meeting, so you know whether at that point you're just gonna be going for the funding and you can, know what you can do the night after that, or you have to wait till the next week to just be sure that what got approved then gets, should be definitely a, uh, an additional education process to make sure it got through at that point, but.
I'm not sure if we could put the money in there and then if it's voted down, just not spend.
Yeah, I, I would assume, we're, we're assuming, especially after the special town meeting, that we will, will hire.
If we could do that, yeah, if we could do that, that would save a tremendous amount of time.
Yeah.
There's always, there's always a chance after this special that if it came back.
Well, we're looking for X number, not to exceed X number of dollars to fund this.
And they said you have to have. You'd imagine if they got through the legislature and did pass or pass a ballot.
Because it's like the negotiation, or, you know, I don't wanna show up and, you know, we're paying ninety-five, a hundred and fifty-five.
We really hope that. I I don't think so.
Correct, correct. Cause that range is pretty long if you guys were showing.
Which is why we've done it this way, was the intent is that from all the feedback, is like, it was like, yeah, so why would we not do this, but you, but if that's the case, you couldn't actually do anything, but even, but even if this came back from the legislature's sign, you really couldn't do anything anyways, cause you wouldn't have funding until May.
Right, exactly, I mean, that's kind of what I thought would happen anyway.
But you wouldn't be able to advertise a position or, you could start, you could start your process of, what are you gonna do at that point?
Yeah, we could have everything in place.
Yeah, to to go, but even then, you know, as with that, we could get going.
And then once we get the approval.
Hiring process will be, I'm, I'd be guessing that that's probably where a lot of dominoes get moved with the positions, is right after town meetings, just in the, the people move around, I mean, it's been interesting, some people we've talked to have already moved.
I'll have to see about this one.
Yeah, it'll be interesting, so I don't know, I mean, so the in, the interim, just so, just so, I only brought it up only because that was a concern that I had, was, does the language simply give you the ability to act, is that gonna?
I was thinking interim, actually, I was thinking that we get a seasoned person for, you know, the first time out the gate, and that hopefully, um, and we've learned from that experience, whether it's a year or two, I mean, I assume it might be someone who might be going to retire in a couple of years.
Well, that's why the the division of local services, that's where that idea had come from, they said a lot do that when they first created the position, is they bring that person in, that you're, you're learning from them to get a lot of that
Mm-hmm.
out of the way, so you're not, so that when you find a great candidate, you like, you're not making them your first game pig of, you know, of how do we, how.
Especially if they're really green, I mean, it, that would go.
Yeah, well, hopefully we're not gonna get green based on salary, based on salary levels, and our goal is not to keep everyone, so.
Right, and then, I mean, I wasn't thinking interim, I was thinking permanent, but maybe it would only last for a few years because that person may be ready to retire soon.
Yeah, I think the nor.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I mean.
The normal terms.
Being, I don't know.
It's gonna be three years, three years is three, two normal, two normal.
Three years?
Three years.
I mean, I guess the all, all the first contract, the first contract, like you, generally.
Is the average?
Unless it's. But if you have something that's great, you might, you might be.
Well, that would make sense, because you don't wanna lock somebody in that's
Right.
not, is best suited.
When, when it's a mature. Is that correct?
Any of those cases, they wouldn't wanna be locked in either.
Oh, I know.
They wanna feel also.
Yeah, yeah, the idea of the interim, the idea of an, uh, an initial interim was just to help them, to help everybody sort of figure out how does this role function, you know?
So are you saying that, um, perhaps we need to fund something, some, fund for an interim before the annual town meeting?
No, not necessarily, cause I mean, it's just, I'm I'm just saying it would be, you know, whatever that salary isn't too high, and you're not spending it, so.
Okay. Right.
It's just, I mean, I don't know, we're taking to find somebody, I have no idea.
Okay.
But you might set a target, it just takes the pressure off so you can get the help faster, kind of thing, they said.
Well, the thing is too, is that you don't want somebody who was already booted out of another town because they did a horrendous job, you know?
Yeah, so now the interns are usually seasoned people that are retired and now they're willing to work and do.
Or they'll, you know, they'll do a couple or five months here.
Hours. So you're making a retiree type of interim.
And then then go out on the road for a while, then maybe come back and do another interim.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Yes. These are the people that don't wanna do this full-time forever anymore, like to do it like as a project basis.
I'm hearing it from a few different sources that there are people watching this process for.
We've.
Oh, yeah.
Mary already heard from somebody who was interested in the position.
Yeah.
Well, we have a good rap, I mean, that's, that's what we heard, but now.
And we've talked to a lot of people, so a lot of people have heard that we're doing this, yes.
Yeah.
We have talked in the past about the possibility of somebody part-time to start with the human resources aspect, I mean, we really haven't talked about that lately and.
Want to take just focus on the personnel.
You heard, you heard last with Tim, right? He said that the, he said that the fund, there was an issue, so one of the things we did as a recommendation was to use the community compact money or whatever to do that, so there's been, uh, Tim was gonna go back.
To try and get somebody to do personnel.
And we did that, there was an issue with the funding, wasn't there, or now it's there, whatever, so that's something they'll try to get back to on, till, you know.
Yeah, keep this all informed.
Yeah, we don't have any answer, we, we just mentioned it to Tim, so he was gonna find out, and then once we know that, cause you guys would be the ones to decide that, um, that it was, the goal was to be able, um, because I think that they, I don't remember what he said exactly, it was more like, whether they were doing it through their office or whoever.
Is that in the minutes?
Just, I'll check.
This is sort of a, it's a discussion, it wasn't a formal one, but.
Sorry.
Thank you, well, thank you.
You have, you're continuing your meeting?
We aren't going to continue our meeting for just like five or ten more minutes.
Okay, we're gonna head to the selectmen's office then to finish up our meeting.
Do I need to follow you, or should, well, should we go to the, we, the camera's here, do you guys need to take that with you, or do you wanna stay here?
Sorry.
That's kind of funny, and rolling down the hall now is a rural fable, what do you think, what do you think, uh?
We're gonna go to your office?
Yeah, can we just take a little break and go that way?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can, we can.
All right.
We can move, that's easy.
No, no, I'll move, we'll, that's all right.
We'll be done in.
Your office is the most nicer, we totally get that.[1795.81]